Okay, this time we'll go ahead and call the meeting ordered. The day is February the 10th, 2020. We want to welcome everyone out to the boardroom tonight on a rainy afternoon. And at this time, we always begin our meeting with a prayer and a pledge. So I would like to ask everyone to please stand at this time. And Commissioner McPeters will lead us in a prayer.
Gracious heavens, Father, we thank you for a day you've given us, Lord. We thank you for our health. Lord, as we look back this past week with the tragedies we've had in this county, Father, I pray that you put your hands upon the families. Oh God, just give them comfort in the loss of loved ones, Lord, those that are sick. God, we do pray for them. Father, we pray for our employees, we pray for our staff. We pray for our county, our residents, dear God. There are many suffering tonight from sicknesses and disease, Lord, that they can't help. God, I pray that you just help us to lift them up and pray for them. Thank you for your Son, Jesus, died upon a cross for our sins. Thank you for salvation, Lord. Bless our country, God bless this county, the state, all of our leaders. We pray for them, God, that they turn to you for leadership and guidance and help us to make the right decisions here tonight for the better of our county. In Jesus' name we do pray. Amen.
Attention, salute, pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, may be seated. Okay, Commissioners, at this time you have the minutes before you. What's the pleasure of the board concerning approving the minutes as presented?
Most approved.
Okay, discussion, in favor say aye, and opposed, light side. Okay, Commissioners, we have the agenda for tonight's meeting. Before us, are there any additions or deletions from staff or Commissioners?
No.
Okay, they've been there. What's the pleasure of the board concerning tonight's agenda?
Most approved, agenda is presented.
Second.
Discussion, in favor say aye. Aye. Okay, let's go ahead and start with our first appointment item. And we have Nicole Robinson. Where's she at? There you are, come on up Nicole. And you have some, you're here to talk about something exciting and the board's really ready and eager to hear the presentation tonight. And Future Farmers of America, the chapter that's been started. And we are so glad to hear this as a board. And we're so glad the students are here with us tonight. And so the floor is yours, welcome to the boardroom.
Thank you so much. Thank you Board of Commissioners for asking us to come and present tonight. It means a lot to us. I am Nicole Robinson and I am the middle school teacher for the agriculture teacher and the FFA advisor. And Ms. Mary Finley, which is our CTE director, actually came last summer, she decided to start this program. And we, she contacted, or I applied, I got this position, and I started in August. I started on the second half of the year. So what happens is, as a middle school teacher, or as a CTE teacher, we will teach one year at one school and then we'll move to the other school. So I started on the second half teaching at West, not too close, speaking at West. Oh, is it too close still?
No, you're fine.
All right. Teaching at West in the fall. And then I just transitioned to East and I'll be at East McDowell Middle School for a year. And then I'll transition back to West and FCS for a year. So tonight, I brought with me some of my FFA officers. These are our officers from Foot Hills Community School and from West McDowell Middle School. And they, we will be having an officer election at East McDowell Middle School as well coming up. But I'm going to start with them, have them introduce themselves, and then we will, after that, ask Mr. Logan Crisp to say the FFA creed for you guys.
My name is Kylie Bidx and I'm the reporter for West McDowell Middle School.
My name is Logan Crisp and I am the first president of the FFA.
My name is Elan Rogers and I'm the first treasurer for FFA.
So I'm going to ask Mr. Logan Crisp, the president of McDowell Middle Schools, to say the FFA creed for you guys.
The FFA creed was written in 1928 by E.M. Tiffany and was officially adopted by the FFA in 1930 as their official FFA creed. I believe in the future of agriculture with a faith more not of words but of deeds, achievements won by the present and past generations of agriculturalists, and the promise of better days through better ways, even as the better things we now enjoy have come to us from the struggles of former years. I believe that to live and work on a good farm or to be engaged in other agricultural pursuits is pleasant as well as challenging, for I know the joys and discomforts of agricultural life and hold an inborn fondness for those associations which even in the hours of discouragement I cannot deny. I believe in leadership from ourselves and respect from others. I believe in my own ability to work efficiently and to think clearly with such knowledge and skill as I can secure, and in the ability of progressive agriculturalists to serve our own and the public's interest in producing and marketing the product of our toll. I believe in less dependence on begging and more power in bargaining, and the life abundant and enough honest wealth to help make it so for others as well as myself, and less need of charity and more of it when being happy myself and playing square with those whose happiness depends upon me. I believe that American agriculture can and will hold true to the best traditions of our national life and that I can exert an influence in my home and community which will stand solid for my part in that inspiring task. Thank you.
He sounds like he may have a little politician in him. Because it's one thing to memorize something, but the presentation in which you give what you've memorized is outstanding. It's a great job, we're proud of you, Logan.
He's actually competing in this. He'll be competing coming up at Regional Rally in May and for the whole West region. And we hope that he'll go on and compete at the state. So we're very proud of him. I wanted to tell you just a little bit about the FFA and then you can also address some questions to these guys. But I'm so proud of each of them and the positions they hold and really in just the leadership skills that FFA is bringing out in these students. But we started, like I said, at West in the, FCS in the fall. And I taught 136 students. And I'm currently teaching 80 students now at East McDowell Middle School. And we have an officer team there, we will have an officer team at East. We have several students interested in applying, so that's going to be coming. And these kids, we came together and we wanted to show you just a short little clip, a video of what we've done since August. So from August till now, these are some of the leadership things that our students have competed in and completed. And then East McDowell will also compete in those and complete those in spring. So to be a part of the FFA, normally students have to pay $20 for dues. Thanks to McDowell County Farm Bureau, our students pay nothing. All they have to be is in an agriculture class and their dues are paid for them. So we have a lot of community support. We're thankful to have Ms. Desrae Kirkpatrick, one of the principals, with us here tonight. And our middle schools have just come together and really supported each of these students. And I'm just proud to be in McDowell County and to see the community support. I thank you, Board of Commissioners, for having us to present. In closing, I just wanted to ask maybe Mr. Adams at the high school if he had a couple of things that he would like to say about the high school FFA and things that are going on there.
Appreciate you having us here tonight. It is an awesome opportunity to be able to offer this to sixth, seventh, and eighth graders as well as ninth through 12th. They'll get to participate in those kinds of things from the time they enter middle school till really a year after they graduate high school, they can be a member of FFA. 750,000 members across the United States. And so we appreciate that. We've got lots of great things going on at the middle school, lots of great things going on at the high school. Encourage you to come by and see us anytime you want to. I'll throw in a little plug, we are doing our fundraiser for National Convention next year, going to Indianapolis, so we're selling raffle tickets for a golf cart if you're interested in that. Reach out to us at either school and we'll have some tickets for you. Other than that, if you've got questions for anybody, you know, the kids are the ones that know the stuff, so that's who you need to be asking.
Tell us about land judging. Reading coming into the nice meeting, tell us about that.
Kylie, competing in land judging, go ahead.
Uh, we went to a place and judged soil and it's basically if like cattle can go on it and crops can grow on it, so yeah.
All right, thank you, that's great.
We traveled to Ash County to do that, so.
Yes. So we've traveled to Indianapolis this year, we've traveled to Ash County this year, we've traveled to Raleigh, and our middle school students actually placed fifth in the state in livestock judging, thanks to Mr. Adams coaching them. He did a phenomenal job in that. The land judging CDE, kids have had a great time doing that where they did slope and soil types. Had a lot of fun doing the career development events and staying after school and working hard after school.
So much better seeing them doing that, playing video games.
It is.
Cell phones, just.
It is, yes, it is. We really appreciate McDowell County for, and this family, for offering this program here, here for our middle school students.
Commissioners, any other questions for the presenters tonight, the students?
I don't have any questions, but I'm very, very proud of you. There's nothing like growing something of your own and doing something of your own and watching it and getting to enjoy the benefits thereafter.
Barry, you're at.
Just working around Mr. Adams at high school and stuff. And matter of fact, I served on the board when I first came on here to bring ag back to the high school. It was a privilege to be able to work with Farm Bureau and CTE back then. I don't think Ms. Finley was, I think Doug Goos was the director then when that occurred. But you know, the one question, you know, you have three students here and they're interested in agriculture, what's your future? I'm doing career exploration at East right now. And our very first thing that we looked at is agriculture. So those careers, what are your, three of your plans future-wise? I know you're young, but as far as careers, what are you looking at?
Go ahead. You can each say. Um, so, you know, go to high school and college, you know, that's it 50/50. But the Marine Corps, that's a definite 100%. That's the first thing, and I hope to retire from it and I'll still be fairly young and do something in agriculture, business, entrepreneurship.
How about motivational speaking? You've got a talent.
You do have a talent, yes. How about you, Zeb?
I want to go to the regular high school and continue FFA as long as I can. And hopefully get into Western and go into their forestry program and get a degree in forestry to go into, to be a forest ranger.
All right. All right. You can put your cover.
Um, I want to go to high school and go to college. And I want to be a radiation nurse.
All right. For one vote, me, anything you want to add?
I spent several years as a school resource officer in McDowell County schools and I'm proud of all of them. We've got some of the best kids there already who are in the nation. But I want to say this, that the kids that are involved in programs like this, you very seldom see them in the principal's office for any kind of discipline problems or anything. It's just great to see that. I'm proud of all of them. But Logan, I've watched you grow up and I just, Mr. Walker said something about you being a politician. I hope I live long enough to be able to vote for you.
Okay, y'all, thanks so much, Mr. Adams and Ms. Robinson. Desrae, you're here tonight in support of these students. You're one of the principals that are junior high. Do you want to say anything?
I just want to say we are extremely blessed to have the talented staff that we do. I mean, I'm just sitting here just smiling, but we are very blessed in McDowell County with the staff members that we have. We, there's no way that I would go to any other neighboring county and feel like that we have the quality of staff that we have. I'm so glad that all of these folks are coming over to East with us.
All right, great. Well, listen, y'all, you did great and we wish you the very best. And anytime this board can ever be of any assistance to your program or you as individual students within the program, reach out to us and we'd love to help any way we can, okay? And Mary's, is Mary here yet?
Yes, she is.
Mary, stand up, wait everybody. And we thank you for all you do too. You do a wonderful job. Thanks, y'all. Thanks for being here. Now, just give them a hand, y'all. Okay, at this time, we're going to move to something real exciting. This is the tax lien advertisement. We go from something real nice and fun and informative and just encouraging to this section of the meeting. So at this time, we'll have Linda Onyefrey, who is our tax assessor, head of that department, come forward. And the floor is yours, Linda, get ahead. Appreciate all you and your staff do.
Thank you. Thanks for having me tonight. Okay, so here to talk about advertisement of tax liens per General Statute 105369. February 3rd, 2020, I provided a report to the board of the total unpaid taxes for current year of 2019. This report included county and district taxes. The balance of the January 31st, 2020 was $1,484,401. The second item is, I'm here to present to the board an alphabetical listing of the unpaid 2019 real property taxes. This list is as of January 31st. So there might have been a few people who paid. Okay. Third item is the cost of advertisement. We budget for $4,700. The quote for this year was 4649, which is the same as last year, which is approximately about $2.43 per name. The advertising fee is added to the parcel that is advertised and collected when the taxes are paid. I would like to recommend that we do the advertisement for March 18th, 2020. This would be in the McDowell News and this would be the publication date. And the last day to pay, to remove a name from the ad would be March 10th. And that is it.
Okay, Ashley, Mr. Wooten, anything you'd add to that?
No, sir. Staff does a great job. You do need to vote to place the ad and accept it.
They have a motion, they have a second discussion. In favor say aye, aye, opposed, light side. Okay?
Thank you.
Have a wonderful evening.
Have a wonderful night too.
All right, let's go ahead and we're slightly ahead of schedule, so let's go to old business. This will be item A, the Recreation Department update. And we'll be having a couple of meetings moving forward, independent of the main board meeting concerning recreation. But give us the update tonight, Mr. Wooten, what you have.
Just a couple of items here, just to update the board and the public on where board and staff stand on a few matters since the presentation from the Parks and Recreation Director's presentation several months ago. After that presentation, the board wanted to look at various issues related to the facilities and programs of that department. One of the issues that were raised by Ms. Huskins related to a drainage problem at the Maple Leaf Ballfields. Right now, we are receiving bids for that repair. And we have two bids in hand and we think we'll have three by the end of the week. And so I'd rather not, you know, tell what those are right now, but would like some discretion for staff to get a purchase order going by the end of the week so we can get that repair done. They are favorable bids. Mr. DePoyster has looked at them as well, just for a second opinion, and we're very excited how those are coming in. We will process those as quickly as possible. Chairman Walker led a meeting last month. Ms. Kirkpatrick, who was with us a minute ago, was there as well. That was a meeting with school and county representatives to discuss greater collaboration between our department and the school's athletic programs. It's just something that I think the board had noticed where it could be improved to where coaches and our programs are interfacing with the high school and the middle school coaches as well. Had great attendance from the school system there. Mr. Garrett was with us as well and a great discussion. We'll be meeting next week and we'll keep those going, building towards special events, but also just regular collaboration there. On a property matter, the county's Recreation Center, there's an adjacent parcel that the city of Marion has owned for many years. We used to have an annual lease renewal. Chairman Walker and Commissioner McPeters might remember that. We did ask the city for ownership of that parcel.
Or they could partner in paving the strip that goes in on in our complex.
They chose donation for some reason.
They did a great job.
The no-cost option, I guess, but that was approved by city council several weeks ago. Mr. Coats, the county attorney, is working on that deed. So we'll have that in our hands very quickly. Some of the other things we're working on with coordination with board, our meetings with other partners like the YMCA, with Little League, with some of the other programs that are external, just to make sure that we're communicating and we're all doing what's in the best interest of the youth and adults in our community that participate in our program. We'll make sure we bring back regular updates.
Okay. And if the commissioner has desire, because we will be meeting with every directors moving forward, the, as Ms. Wooten said, the group that met initially with the school system that we're going to be meeting ongoing. So if you've got a desire to jump in, there'll be several different meetings, the YMCA talking about the soccer program, the football program being run by an independent group. So we're looking to what, how the board, we can just make it better and more seamless. So if you've got a desire to be at one of those meetings, just talk to Mr. Wooten and he'll make sure when space that, we're two are there.
Thank you.
Okay? All right, thank you, Ms. Wooten. So go to item C under old business. This will be the old Hendrix Farm grazing update. So Mr. Wooten, go ahead, sir.
Yes, sir. Last month, we talked about property that the purchase, the county purchased about five or six years ago, maybe longer, for our future water treatment plant near Lake James. We discussed the home and different things around the property and that was addressed by the board. Also talked about when the county purchased the property, we inherited a grazing agreement with a gentleman who has had his cows there for quite a while. When we visited the site several months ago, it was noted and brought to the board's attention, that agreement. So the board had asked for the county attorney to look at that and make some recommendations on possibly how to change that. Did have a visit from the gentleman today who has his cattle there, got his contact information, which I don't think we had before, which is wonderful. He explained some situations we might want to consider, specifically that his cattle graze on our property as well as the adjacent property, which was part of the tract that we purchased. There is no fence in between the two. And if we were to choose someone else for that grazing, there's a potential neighbor issue we might want to address first. So this is new information to learn today. So I want to, I haven't had a chance to talk to the neighbors, so if it's okay, if you would maybe table this for a month, give me some time to talk to them, get some more information and come back to you next month on it, if that's okay.
I've just got one question. Have we ever had anybody approach us about using that property?
Not since it's been in the paper or beforehand, no, sir.
So he's used it for years and nobody has approached us about using it?
And evidently, he's mowing the whole parcel, is what he mows around the house and everything.
He's been a good steward of the property or he wouldn't do that, so, yeah.
And if anybody ever would come forward that would have a desire to have that option, the board at that time could evaluate and do the bid process as recommended.
Nicely across that bridge when we get to it.
Yeah.
I mean, let him use it.
Is that a motion to screen?
Yes, sir.
Okay. That a motion? Second discussion, in favor say aye, aye, opposed, light side. Okay? Problem solved. Let's go to item D, the public shooting range. We've got about four minutes, Mr. Wooten, you squeeze that in there.
Yes, sir, shouldn't take too long. You have, this is the public shooting range on Ashworth Road that we are developing with NC Wildlife. You have previously committed to retain the ownership of the property. You approved the agreement with the state last month. The state is now asking, they've presented two options, as you can see in your packet, for the construction of the improvements. The two options are the state does all the bidding, selection of contractor and so forth, or the county does it. The difference being if the state does it, they run it through the State Construction Office in Raleigh, which usually means for state projects, it takes a lot longer and it would probably cost more because of the bureaucracy and time. Since the county is retaining ownership, you have the option to do the bidding through, you know, run the numbers through our books, et cetera, which we can do. I've talked to Ms. Bell, she may be around, but we can do it. The issue, it's not really an issue, but we would be paying the contractor upfront and getting reimbursement from the state. The issue, it's not really an issue, but we would be paying the contractor upfront and getting reimbursement from the state. So that can be delayed sometimes, but it's not typically an issue. The state is a good payer, of course. So staff would recommend the latter option because it would happen faster and probably cheaper for our 10% match.
When did the process start?
2016, I think.
16, okay.
Been that long.
So staff, you're stating that it could take longer if we go through the state bid process?
Option two.
Yeah. Okay. What's the pleasure of the board?
I think our folks have waited long enough.
I agree.
Yeah, I started saying, how much additional staffing? Is it going to take additional staffing for us or outside or anything?
The state, I didn't mention that, but the state will oversee the construction and do the inspection, just like they were doing it. It's running through our.
Just the bids run through our finance department, correct? Is that right?
Hold our hand through the whole process.
Okay.
I move, will you take care of it later?
Motion.
Was that with option one? Was that the?
The county option.
County option, okay.
Got a motion to forward, you have a second?
Second.
Second discussion. All in favor say aye. Aye and opposed left side. Okay? All right, great. Now, let's go ahead and move to our 5:30 appointment. We have the Sugar Hill-Muffet Co. Fire Department hearing their chief. I do see Mr. Washburn here. We have Mr. Keller interested, and Craig, there you are, Craig. I was looking all around trying to see where everybody was at. So Craig, come on up. And Craig Walker does the outstanding job in McDowell County. And Craig, the floor is yours, sir. Lead us out.
This is just an overview again, as we spoke in the vice commissioner meeting for the Sugar Hill Fire Station Two district and redistrict lines. And as spoken before, this is affecting areas of the primarily Nick's Creek, Lidle Mountain, Henry McCall, so is Sugar Hill Road. Them areas are affecting, as far as approximate number, around 200 residents. What them residents will see is either, the majority of them residents will see a decrease in their insurance rating and also response time on them departments. Who them lines are actually at. If you go out Nick's Creek Road, the original line for Sugar Hill and Marion was at Cannon Farm Road. That'll be moved to, or just past Chris Drive, going down Lidle Mountain Road. That Sugar Hill line was at Walpole Road. That was, one of the areas past Walpole Road was no district or Class 10 fire district area. And that's approximately probably 25 homes from there to Henry McCall Road that was in an unrated fire district. Sugar Hill, obviously in Old Fort and PG picked them areas up and still responded, but as far as DOI, they had no insurance rating. And that's going to relieve that. Sugar Hill will actually respond all the way to the end of Lidle Mountain Road from their Station Two District to the Greenlee Road. The other areas, part of Henry McCall Road area that PG could not get in their five-mile district, that'll go down to approximately 1250 block of Henry McCall Roads where that line will be. The way this process goes, if, it's your pleasure, if you, if the board approves this, then it will go to DOI, up to ISO for approval and then down to the insurance costs.
Craig, what is that? Remind us, I believe Sugar Hill is rated a five right now, that district, correct?
That's correct.
Which is a home run because it's hard to go, it's hard to go lower than that unless you have a lot of industry. Is that correct?
Yes, for a rural department, that's huge. That's, and all of our departments that has re-rated has done excellent in their rating.
And that saves the taxpayers, you said, on the insurance bill they get?
Yes, sir.
Tremendously. And I'll say on behalf of the board, that our board appreciates the work that our fire departments do in McDowell County. They respond, they train, they get there, and those guys, guys and girls, they do a wonderful job. People don't understand, some departments in North Carolina don't even have, they have gravel, the departments have gravel, just like a shed that they put their trucks in. These guys train, they see how they can save you money and how they can protect your home and structure in event of a fire. And so our hats off to our fire department, firemen in McDowell County while you do day in, day out. This time, I'll go ahead and declare the board in a public hearing setting, which is a requirement of this process, to consider relocating the boundary line between adjoining fire service districts for the purpose of Sugar Hill-Muffet Co. Fire Department providing the fire coverage for that stated area. So is there anybody, we'll start on this side. Is anybody on this right-hand side that wishes to comment on information you've heard here tonight concerning this proposed change? If you do, just state your name and we'll recognize you. Okay, we're going to front row, second row, third row, last row and hallway. We're going to let them inside. Front row, second row, third row. The chief's not even going to talk about this. And the last row. Okay, down here, motion to go have a public hearing?
Motion to go have a public hearing.
Discussion, all in favor say aye. Aye and opposed left side. Okay. Mr. Wooten, now we're ready to take action, correct? We satisfy the requirements?
Yes, sir.
Okay, what's the pleasure of the board?
Make a motion, we approve a request for the service district changes to the Sugar Hill-Muffet Co. Fire District.
Second.
Okay, discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye and opposed left side. Okay? Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, sir.
Thanks, Craig. All right, this time, we're a little ahead of schedule again. So let's go to item A under new business. Mr. Wooten, this will be the pilot plant equipment and disposal of that equipment. So go ahead, sir, lead us out.
Yes, sir. And when we say disposal, we talk about the formal process of disposing of county property, not necessarily throwing away. So the county worked, gosh, about 10 years ago to help develop what was called the Foothills Pilot Plant near the Ag Barn south of Marion. Unfortunately, after doing fairly well for a while, it shut down about three and a half years ago. Since that time, staff has been maintaining the building, security, heating and air, so forth, at a minimum level, just to keep it, you know, safe and so forth. But there is equipment that was used in the processing that is not of use to the county. Talked to the county attorney and we looked into ownership of that equipment and we did find the owner, contacted the owner. Long story short, it will pass from their ownership to county ownership in the next couple of weeks. And so we would ask the board to declare that equipment surplus for what use, for someone else to have a better use for it. And that way, we can start disposing of it as allowed by state law, whether that's transfer to other nonprofits or if that's private or public sale. There are a few items that we could probably use internally, tables and ladders or whatever, but most of it is very specialized and probably needs a different home other than the county government.
So what type of items are in it? You said you got coolers?
There's a walk-in cooler outside. There are food-type carts inside. There's processing equipment, of course. They process chickens there mostly, but there's different.
Stainless steel.
A lot of stainless steel.
Food grade.
Food grade, NSF-type equipment. Again, Waylon Prebor with the senior center has looked at some of the pictures and will tour it if he hasn't already. And suggested maybe he could tag them, the different things. There's probably two or three tables he could use, but about everything else would need a different home. Either with a local nonprofit, with a transfer that you could do by resolution or, you know, sales that we can do. But if there's someone locally, an entity that could use it, that might be easier than trying to sell it over the internet or something.
Okay, so the requested action is for the board to declare that equipment surplus effective March 15th. What's the pleasure of the board? Oh, what's the motion, Mr. Wooten?
I'll make a motion that we dispose of, but I do have some discussion on it.
Okay.
I'll take it for purposes of discussion.
Okay, discussion, go ahead, man.
I just want to say that, you know, we've had requests from the local food hub that they want some support and help from us. And if there's food processing or coolers, whatever, that we can maybe shift their way, let them have first choice on it.
Okay. Yeah, that's a great idea. Great idea. So still, once staff goes in and sees if there's any use for any of it, then we'll go to that group next in. Is that a consensus?
Yes.
Pleasure of the board? Okay, all right. You've got your direction, Mr. Wooten.
In any dibs or whatever the better word is, we would have to bring that back for forward action. We'll definitely do that.
Okay. Let's do the motion to go ahead and declare, well, we've got a motion, second. All in favor say aye. Aye and opposed left side. Okay, thank you. Let's move to item C under new business. This is the Board of Elections software update approval that's needed. Go ahead, Mr. Wooten.
This is very routine. The Elections Director, Ms. Welborn, has asked you to approve the upgrade of software on the tabulator machines. This is a formality. The local board has approved the upgrade, as has the state board, but they do require the commissioner's approval. So this is very routine and necessary.
Okay. Comments, questions by board members?
Most approve the Board of Elections software upgrade.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye and opposed left side. Okay? Let's go to the Tourism Development Update, item D under new business. Mr. Wooten, go ahead, sir.
Yes, sir. Again, we meet a lot, other than this meeting, if people aren't aware. And it's all in the purpose of doing good things for the county. One of these meetings was last week, or the week before, with the Tourism Development Authority, several representatives from that entity, which is more or less under the county umbrella, but is technically a separate governmental authority, met with their director, their chair and another board member, city of Marion. The mayor was there, as well as the city manager. Chairman Walker, of course, myself, Steve Bush with the Chamber of Commerce, and also Chugabear Athie with the McDowell Economic Development Association. The purpose of that meeting was collaboration. Another word used earlier, how we all as local partners could improve collaboration, specifically in the area of marketing of the community and maybe specifically Marion. At Old Fort, where you have governmental entities that don't necessarily have a seat at the literal table of the TDA, this meeting was starting off that discussion on how they can be involved and have communication opened up to where the city of Marion, the Marion Business Association, to be specific, has marketing goals, that City Council has endorsed, how those can be officially communicated to TDA and where there can be some given, give and take and exchange on promoting City Council's specific goals specifically. So very positive discussion, believe. There's been some communication back and forth since then. The MBA's marketing plan has been sent to TDA, again, to help promote some of the activities the city of Marion is doing in the MBA. So there will be additional meetings coming up. And I think it's going to be a regular meeting. A lot of those partners get together already, but it's just making sure there's good, honest communication between the groups. So very positive.
Okay, great. Let's go to item A under new business. This will be the Woodlawn Park, lead us or no?
Yes, sir. This is related to, we call it the Woodlawn roadside park. It used to be an NCDOT rest area up in the Woodlawn area. When NCDOT stepped away from management, I believe in the 90s, maybe, Terry, the county, there was a community outcry at that because the U.S. Forest Service was going to essentially shut it down and probably just remove it. It's on U.S. Forest Service land. And so the county stepped up at that time to operate it and we have done so ever since. The lease for that, it's currently a 10-year lease. It was renewed in 2010. It expires this December. They do require at least a six-month notice if you intend to renew it. And so we didn't want to wait until June to do that. So we wanted to see and make sure if you do or don't want to renew the lease, we could get those lease discussions going.
Mr. Wooten, give the board a quick update on the water situation, the bathrooms?
So if I turn, look to my right, Mr. DePoyster is here as well. But the bathrooms are operational as far as the toilets. The sinks are not there because we are not allowed to have potable water at that facility because of additional requirements for filtering that we would have to do on that well there. So we do have the operating toilets. Right now, it is shut down because of the season as far as the bathrooms, but there is a portable toilet there for now.
Okay. Are there comments, questions?
The port of potty is there for the hand washing specifically? Or is that there to use as a commode? Because the commode, we can use the commodes, right?
That's great. I think the port of charge has been picked up.
Yeah, they're there. I saw them yesterday.
Because the park is, should be open in April. The water is restored non-potty.
Do we have any idea how many people actually use that facility? Or is it going up and down the road? I very seldom ever see a vehicle there.
Sundays is a big, used to be in summertime, Sunday is a big use.
I'll say this, it probably would be utilized if it was enhanced and maintained a little better. And I'm saying that about us. I mean, if we're going to continue the lease, then I suggest we enhance the place and put some good-looking tables up there and do what we need to do to the restrooms. Otherwise, I don't know what benefit it is to us.
And that's been, and that's been an ongoing conversation, specifically what you just stated, for a couple of years now.
Yeah.
I know that when, I think in 2010, we were looking at this, there were some of the same discussions where at that time, it's not a county asset. You know, it is for 10 years. And, you know, making investments in something that potentially could go back to the Forest Service, I think, was discussion back then. But I don't know, there's other groups, honestly, that are pursuing that lease. And so if the county doesn't do it, I don't know that anyone else would, so. But if there's decisions made, it would probably be to the county's benefit for a very long time.
And the Forest Service has, they would not have any desire to maintain that park then if we didn't do it?
We have talked about that before. They have no, it's not that, maybe the interest is not there, but they have no resources to put into it either.
Okay.
I guess my question is, to have a picnic area with no way to wash hands brings an issue to my mind, okay? A big issue to my mind, you know? But I don't know how much the county would want to invest in that or even what it would entail.
Could we explore that before we make a decision the next month?
Let's table this until next month for more information, okay?
This is helpful because we'll go get quotes on filter and everything.
All right.
Thank you.
Okay, this time, let's move to our appointment agenda. And we have our 5:45 2019 Independent Audit Report. And I'm looking for auditors and I don't.
They're in the hallway.
They're in the hallway, okay.
Somewhere. Where'd they go to?
They've been quarantined in the hallway till the time.
It's a good place to keep auditors.
They are here.
Okay.
Someone's hauling men to go.
While they're coming, Ashley, why don't you preface this?
Sure. So for everyone's benefit, local governments are required to have an independent audit every year. Okay.
Five minutes this week?
They're five minutes away?
They're even walking. So if we're here, just go and get them.
Okay, go ahead, Ashley.
Five seconds, maybe. So again, counties, cities, et cetera, are required to have an independent audit. So the board has hired this firm to come and look at the county's books. And so they spend, and they'll talk about this, so you will have some repeating, but they spend several weeks with us onsite reviewing financial transactions that the county has engaged in for the prior year. So this is the fiscal year 19 audit, so the year that ended June 30th. And they will present their findings on anything good, bad or ugly that they discovered in their process. And so this has been. And so this has been, again, we can short-circuit a little bit, but this has been submitted to the LGC. And they have reviewed it and sent back any comments that they will. But again, this is something we're required to do every year. And you're required to hear from them.
All right, great. Well, we would like to welcome the firm of Loudermilk Church and Company to the boardroom tonight for the presentation of the 2019 audit. So, the floor is yours. Come on up, my friend, and we will hear you gladly.
Box of donuts. Get a box of donuts, Jerry.
Commissioner Peter thought you had donuts.
I thought you had a box of donuts in there.
You get excited.
Got it.
Don't know how this audit looks. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
You're welcome.
Now, this report's about 140 pages, so it'll take about three hours.
Hit the highlights. Highlights.
We'll see you in the morning.
Three hours. Better go get done this week than what's today.
Who else, who else may want one?
I'll take one.
Did you have actual for clerk?
Yes.
And Commissioner Brown, we need to, actually.
Yeah, I think we, hopefully we brought enough.
I have it electronically from the next round.
There you go.
What we call a governance letter.
Second.
Thanks, sir.
You know, you go to a doctor for a physical, this is, this is the financial version of going to the doctor for a physical. They check it all out. Is that a correct assessment, maybe, possibly?
I don't know.
Spoken like a true auditor.
All right. You'll be, is this what I get over here?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, appreciate y'all coming to be with you. I'm Phil Church. This is Serena Edson. She was actually the auditor in charge of the audit. So, I'm going to make a few brief comments, okay? And then I will turn it over to her to go over the numbers with you. One thing is, we have, we did give you what's called a clean, unqualified, unmodified opinion, which of course is the opinion that you want. This report has gone to the Local Government Commission, and they have approved it. And also, you have what we call an A133 audit, and it has to do with the level of your funding. Anytime your funding goes over $750,000, your government, state and government monies that come in, you have an A133 audit. And we also gave you a clean, unmodified opinion on the use of those funds. So that's always a good thing. This is a large report. Like I said, we're going to be going over highlights. Did you give them the highlights yet?
Did.
You have? You really give them the highlights? Okay. And this is the audit for June 30th, 2019. As we go through this, if you have a question, stop us. We'll try to answer it. If we can't, maybe Ms. Allison Bell or Mr. Whitman could help us, help us out. But hopefully, we can answer any of your questions. Serena, anything else I need to add to that? Okay, I'll turn it over to Serena to go over some numbers with you, okay?
Good evening, Chairman and Commissioners. So, tonight, I'm just going to hit the highlights of your main operating fund. I am not going to get into any of the highlights of any of the other funds. Each government has a general fund, which is the main operating fund. And so that is the one that I'm going to address tonight. So, I did hand out some financial highlights, and I'm just going to quickly go through those. If you have questions, you can stop me. So again, this is for the general fund, and it does include the revaluation fund. So, the 2018 column was the prior year audit that, with your other audit firm. And then 2019 is the audit year that we have audited. So, looking at total assets, went from $14 million, $10,054, to 2019, $14 million, 596,159. Fund balance, just a slight increase, actually, was an increase of $37,254. And fund balance committed for tax revaluation went from $6,339 to $21,850. Looking at total revenue, 2018 was approximately $41,500,000, and was actually up approximately $44,600,000. And your budget for revenue was $44 million, just, is approximately $44,500,000. So, revenues were over budget approximately a little less than $100,000 for the general fund. Most of your growth in your revenues was due to your property tax, your local option sales tax, and there were some grants as well. And then total expenditures went from approximately $40,600,000 to approximately $44 million. And the budget was $47,000, I'm sorry, $47,300,000. So you can see there's a, a good amount of savings there, mainly due to controlled spending. So, definitely a positive there. And revenues over and under expenditures before any other financing sources for 2018 was $827,735, and for 2019 was $669,981. Your other financing sources and uses, that's like if you have any kind of debt financing, proceeds from that, or transfers in and out to other funds. So for 2018, there were more financing uses, which is typically the case with the general fund, being your main operating fund. So, it was more uses of $2.8 million approximately. And for 2019, other financing sources and uses, of course, more uses, And what you had budgeted was approximately $2.8 million. The reason for the big difference between the budget and the actual was the appropriated fund balance. And then increase or decrease in fund balance, 2018 was a negative $1.9 million, and for 2019, $37,254. Ad valorem taxes collected went from 99.28% to 99.36%. And then percent of taxes collected, I'm sorry, investment income almost doubled from almost $78,000 to $144,432. And then going on down to fund balance available without the revaluation fund included, available fund balance went from $7.7 million to approximately $6.8 million. Expenditures and transfers, transfers to, less any financing sources, went from $43.4 million to $44.6 million. Available fund balance without the revaluation fund included went from 17.85% to 15.23%. I do want to point out, there's a lot of projects going on right now, which contributes to that. So, just a lot of good things going on right now. Fund balance available, available fund balance went from $7.7 million to $6.8 million. And expenditures and transfers to, less any financing sources, I'm sorry, I'm repeating it. No, I'm not. Before, I had talked about with the rebound fund. So, expenditures and transfers to, less financing sources, 17.86% to 15.28%. And then statewide average for a county with a population grouping of 25,000 to 49,999, went from 33.73% to 34.09%. And that's really just for comparison purposes. The Local Government Commission recommends a minimum available fund balance of 8%. So, as you can see, the county is well above that. But they also like to look at comparing the counties to other counties and the municipalities to other municipalities within the same population groups. So, but like I said, you've got a lot of projects going on right now. And so that's contributing to yours being down just slightly. Any questions on anything that I have mentioned?
If I'm hearing you correctly, we are trying our best to be good stewards of our taxpayers' money.
Yes, definitely.
And there is a lot going on, too, as you stated,
Yeah.
with, with the courthouse and what else happened there. A lot of different demands upon the budget, so...
Yeah, there's definitely a lot of projects going on. And like I said, that's definitely a positive thing and definitely shows the growth in the county when you're able to do that. So, a lot of positive stuff in here, so...
If you, if you have any questions later, this is a lot of information in about 10 or 15 minutes. Feel free to call us, we'll try to answer them. And we did give you another letter called the Letter of Governance. Basically, the main thing in there is saying, did we have any disputes with Ms. Bell or Mr. Whitman? And we did not. They were great to work with, yes. You have some good people. And we appreciate the opportunity.
Okay, so, Mr. Whitman, tonight, we need to approve the 2019 Independent Audit Report. And then also, you're requesting the approval for the year 2021 and the audit proposal as presented, correct?
That's right. Approve this year and to do next year's audit as well.
Okay, it's a pleasure, board.
We approve the audit report for this year and approve the project for next year.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, and you pose the last sign. Okay, thanks, y'all. Great evening, thanks for the report, and we'll be in touch. And this time, let's move to our next appointment item. This will be item E, and this is a library operations update. We have Mr. Brinkley, our library director, with us tonight. So, Mr. Brinkley, welcome to the boardroom, and we hear you gladly. Go ahead, sir.
Hey, I appreciate this opportunity to talk with you guys. So, the first thing I wanted to share was that last year, we completed our strategic plan. And there's a lot of data to go through, a lot of things to figure out what we're going to do with those surveys and focus groups. One of the things that came out of it was need to have some sort of consistent and structured staff development in place. So, our next question was, well, what kind of qualities or skills do we need to develop in staff? And so, they created these seven core competencies. And so, seven skills, knowledge, and attitudes you need to be successful in the work that we do and to be able to serve the community well. And so they came up with public service, ethics and values, knowledge and learning, technology, adaptability, communication and collaboration. And so, using this as a framework, this is what we're using when we look for webinars and trainings and conferences to attend. If it touches on one of those core competencies, we're heading in the right direction. We also use it as a guide to help define the quality of work that's expected. So when we have new people join our team, this is the expectation we have for them. And so, staff responded really well to it, and it's been working really well. The second thing I wanted to share was that we started what we call a memory lab over at the Old Fort Library. And so what we've done is, we set aside this space at the library where people can make a digital copy of photographs, 8-millimeter film, VHS tapes, cassette tapes, and all sorts of things. And so if somebody wants to preserve their family memories, we can help them do that for free. And we're really fortunate that the branch manager, Carmen Malin, she's got a lot of experience working, doing archival work. And so thanks to her, it's really become a very successful program.
Marla, repeat that again. What, what items can you take to the Old Fort Library, and they can help you preserve those? Repeat that again.
Exactly, yeah. You can make a digital copy, and that includes like records, like cassette tapes, 8-millimeter film. Can I say the two things that have been most popular are the VHS tapes and photographs. It's kind of hard to describe, but it's almost like a wand that can, you can scan over photographs and create some really high-quality images that you can preserve. And so, and again, it's all free to the public.
Do they need to schedule an appointment? Because I think that, that's something we need to let the public know, because, you know, everybody's got those VHS tapes like that sitting piled up in a corner somewhere here, or in a box, that they would like to shrink to a little tiny disk.
Yeah, we've had a lot of people bring in like anniversaries, weddings, and birthdays, and concerts, and things like that already. And so, but yeah, definitely, any of your support and getting the word out is appreciated. We try to get it, I know we'll have an article in the McDowell News soon. It's been really well received on Facebook and social media. And so, yeah, the challenge is always getting the word out there. The last thing I wanted to bring up was, we are interested in purchasing a bookmobile. Again, as part of the strategic planning process, we, again, we did surveys, we did focus groups. And one of the things we asked people was, what are some of the barriers that keep you from coming to the library or accessing our services? And as you can imagine, a lot of people talked about transportation. Either they don't have a car, or they have one that they're sharing with a group of people. Other people talked about no internet access at home. And then some people talked about time. Either their work shifts for really long, and so by the time they get off work, the library would already be closed. Other people are really committed to like after-school events, other sort of civic organizations that they do after school, those sort of things. And we felt that the bookmobile would be an easy answer to something like this. So not only could we bring like those traditional services, like books, magazines, and movies, we could also bring Wi-Fi and computers, scanners, or printers for people to use. And we also thought that if we're going to be going out into areas of the community that target those areas that need our services the most, then we should actually try to bring as many other county services along with us. So we reached out to the EMS, DSS, and the Health Department to see if they'd be willing to ride with us. They volunteered to, so they can help give like vaccinations, health screenings, help people sign up for public, or different services. And so, so we're really excited about the project, the idea of it. Unfortunately, bookmobiles are not free. And so, there is a estimate, for the type of bookmobile we're thinking about, it'd be about $150,000 to purchase. Fortunately, we're in the process of applying for a grant that would pay two-thirds of it, $100,000. And we feel pretty good about our odds. And we're also lucky to have the remaining third already in reserves for the library. But before we move forward with it, we would like your permission and your support to get the bookmobile.
Marla, one question.
Sure.
Do you have reserves that are, for the library use now? Those, are those tied to a specific use? I mean, we can't use those reserves for carpet for the library?
Right.
Pairs to the building or books? What, is that a designated stack of money that can only be used for something like your town map?
Correct. So what it would do is, we would use those reserves for other things, but it would free up our budget for other, for purchasing the bookmobile. So like, for example- Uh, so like, for example, um, you, uh, supply money that would normally go to say something like a capital, um, improvement, we would use it instead for the bookmobile instead and, um, use those, um, uh, the reserves for, you know, programming costs and that kind of stuff.
It's a long yes to your question. You're not doing something there to where we have drainage issues in the back where we can't, we're not picking the vehicle over fixing the party.
No, no, I just, I mean, to me, I'm sitting here thinking, it's kind of like a line transfer, you know, you transfer from here to here, but frees up money here to do what you need to do. My thinking, I may be wrong about that, but.
As long as it's not earmarked for something.
As long as it's not earmarked for something specific.
I just want to make sure that we're not taking money for something that is not a have to have item and taking money away from, uh, that we could use for a needed for certain on the site, uh, item.
And you're saying we're covered?
No, I definitely think, um, and we did think about what else we could be possibly doing instead, but, um, so far I think the bookmobile would really go far as being just a mobile branch. And I think if we were just doing just the traditional, uh, purpose of the bookmobile, it'd be one thing, but again, since we're bringing more and bringing other county departments along with us, I think it gives a little bit more value to its purpose.
You know, we have a lot of folks that complain about not having wifi service in certain parts of the county, uh, especially in the, uh, summertime, uh, when, uh, not much school going on. Bookmobile is a wonderful thing. Uh, I remember the first book I ever read all the way through in elementary school came from the McDowell County bookmobile. That was John Kennedy and the PT 109. So I'm in full support of a bookmobile.
Yeah.
That's been a while.
But that bookmobile was written while?
Other comments, questions? What's the pleasure of the board?
Move that we support your project.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Discussion, all in favor say aye. Aye and opposed last time. Okay, Marla, have a good evening. Thanks for being here tonight.
Appreciate it, everybody.
Let's go to, uh, item F under new businesses, this will be board appointments. Okay, we have, the transportation board has one vagacy and we have not received any applications. Library Board Trustees has two vagacies and this is the first reading. And then the Friends of the Font of Flor State Trail, uh, is seeking representation to be, uh, on that board and, uh, they have requested me. So I don't mind a bit to share the duties, but.
Motion to approve that.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor say aye. Aye and opposed last time. Are there the nominations at this point? Okay, let's go ahead. Is, is the sheriff here?
He's not here yet.
He's not here yet, okay. Let's go to item G under new businesses, this is administrative items. Mr. Woodton, go ahead, sir, let us know.
Yes, sir, I'll try to go quickly through these. Um, the first item, and Mr. Harmon is here due to space, he is in the hallway. Uh, you've essentially redesigned, uh, the board of adjustment, uh, and so you met with him a couple of weeks ago. Uh, I believe there was a discussion about a, setting a fee for variance requests, uh, for that board. There's a lot of staff time that goes into those requests and there's advertisement and county expenses that honestly we've just been eating, but, um, we are seeing more of those. And so staff would recommend a two hundred dollar, uh, fee be put in the fee schedule for those requests. We have the memo there as well.
So we're going to do one at a time, do one item at a time then, is what you're requesting?
Yes, sir.
Okay, comments, questions regarding this item? This fee, various requests?
Motion to approve the various request fee.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor say aye. Aye and opposed last time. Okay, so go ahead, sir.
The next item is a tipping, uh, late fee waiver request, actually from the city of Marion. Uh, they are a customer of ours as well, the transfer station. Uh, you have the request there in your packet. Uh, there was a, a question, if not a dispute, over a bill. And while staff were discussing the item, uh, the bill went delinquent. So they have paid the bill and, uh, were asking that you waived the late fee as they.
Okay, what's the pleasure of the board?
Move that we approve.
Second. Discussion, all in favor say aye. Aye and opposed last time.
The next one is somewhat similar. You have a late fee waiver for, uh, occupancy tax. Uh, as described in the memo, it seems to be related to how the online rental companies process payment for the property owner. So there's a very detailed letter from him, uh, seems to be a reasonable request and staff would recommend.
Move that we approve.
Got a motion, have a second.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor say aye. Aye and opposed last time. Okay?
Uh, the next are, uh, non-collectible accounts, uh, for finance for, uh, the EMS, uh, function. Ask you to approve this write-offs.
Motion to approve write-off, second.
Discussion, all in favor say aye. Aye and opposed last time.
And then last on this item are the budget amendments GF forty through forty-four and then four different, uh, fund amendments.
Move that we approve the amendments as presented.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor say aye. Aye and opposed last time. Okay, uh, let's go to, uh, the sheriff's still not here yet, so let's go ahead and go to, uh, item H under, uh, new businesses to be taxed matters. Mr. Woodton, go ahead, sir.
Uh, these are, uh, your regular releases, refunds, discoveries. I will point out, uh, the discoveries, these are bills that are, uh, properties that are, uh, located. There were quite a few this month. Uh, these are mostly, uh, business property. Um, and so I did get some information that I will forward to you tomorrow from the tax assessor on how new businesses are notified of the requirement to list property. So, uh, we do work with those folks, uh, but you see those discoveries there as well. As you approve.
Okay, comments, questions? What's the pleasure of the board?
Move that we approve the tax matters, second.
Discussion, all in favor say aye. Aye and opposed last time. Okay, uh, we've got, uh, all the new business covered and, uh, let's go to item B under old business. This is our EMS capital project update. Uh, Mr. Keller is here.
He, I can handle this.
Oh, you got this, okay.
Yes, sir. It, it's pretty straightforward. These are two, uh, basic items we need. Uh, so this is related to the, what I call the northern base. Uh, it's actually stationed for, this is the former credit union, uh, on the north side of Marion. Uh, two items, the first is, um, a reimbursement resolution. Uh, we have expenses related to the development of that building, the remodeling, uh, that we need to go ahead and pay, uh, specifically the architect fees. Uh, but we are going to seek financing later in the spring, uh, so we need to ask you to approve this resolution to where, so we can pay Mr. Hamrick and keep that project going.
Motion to approve resolution.
Does that include the easement also?
We need to do them separate together. I can do them, yeah, motion to approve the, uh, easement resolution also.
Second.
Okay, discussion, all in favor say aye. Aye and opposed last time. Okay?
Thank you.
And what this is for everybody who's here and is watching, uh, for years our EMS, uh, crowd has, has wanted a four base, uh, setup in McDowell County and, uh, with the current base located downtown, they have to still obey traffic, uh, lights and, and it slows down the response time. So this board understands and, and the need to have that, those units rolling quick because in a hard tax situation, minutes equal muscle, heart muscle. So we, we are a one hundred percent in favor as a board to go ahead and get them at a location on land the county currently owns, uh, out on Barnes Road. That way they can just pop out of there, hit the bypass, then by also, uh, purchasing the, uh, former credit union on the other side of town going north, that's going to increase time for them to go up to the Woodlawn North Cove, but also to respond back into the Marion area too. So, um, we've got, we have got, I'll just say this, we have got the best, uh, EMS director and personnel in the state of North Carolina. They save lives every day, every day. We've got a commissioner, he's not here tonight, that, uh, that had, uh, had, uh, something very serious happen to him at his home and they responded and, uh, saved his life, I mean, basically saved his life. And so, uh, this board, uh, fully supports our EMS and, and their goal to go this four base setup and increase time so that we can save more lives. And so that's a little bit of what's going on with this right here. And so we're in the process of, uh, going through the steps to construct that new base, uh, on each side of town. Uh, at this time, uh, let's go to item F, uh, six fifteen. I think we can handle this without the sheriff being here. This is a human trafficking overview. Uh, evidently Commissioner Peters seems to think the sheriff didn't know he's supposed to be here. So there's a little mix-up maybe. So we'll go ahead and, and Mr. Woodton, uh, Commissioner Vaughn had asked this to be on the agenda and rightfully so, face, we, we live, listen, you wouldn't think that human trafficking occurs in these rural western counties. It's right here in McDowell County. And so we want to put a highlight on that. Brenda, go ahead, I want, I want to steal your thunder, go ahead and introduce the topic.
Oh, the topic.
Yeah, the topic, yeah.
I was about to enter, so, okay. Human trafficking overview, um, I kind of forgot my numbers, but that, our area, especially since there's an interstate through it, we are in one of the areas that it's kind of like a prime target for this. And with the freedom that children have these days with social media and a lot of them are not guarded or watched or I guess, uh, my granddaughters say I'm way too nosey, okay? But I don't feel I'm a bit way too nosey. They're twelve years old and they've got no business having total freedom of internet and total freedom of the cell phone use.
That's right.
And, you know, as long as a parent pays for the property and loves that child, they're going to see what they're doing. But although all those guards can be in place in your home, we live in a mobile society and younger children have a lot more freedoms and a lot more at hand and in reach than we had when this old sixty-five-year-old woman was there, okay? Uh, we had a party line telephone and my neighbor was very good at letting mother know who I talked to. But that's not the case these days. So human trafficking is something that we need to be very aware of and we need to do what we can as commissioners or as a county as a whole to prevent human trafficking in our area.
And we, as a board, we appreciate, uh, Commissioner Vaughn bringing this to the, the rest of the board's attention and, uh, we fully support, uh, what she's doing here. And so I'll, do we have, um, anything, Mr. Woodton, you need to add?
Do you have a resolution? Um, worked on.
Okay, Commissioner Green's been in law enforcement. Uh, let me go ahead and ask some comments to this.
I would caution everybody to be vigilant when you're in the public, uh, because it's not only children that are being abducted. It's young men and young women, uh, that are, uh, forced into, uh, slave labor. Uh, so it's not just, it's not just kids, but specifically for the children, parents need to pay attention when they're in Walmart where their kids are at, uh, because it don't take but a second for somebody to clap their hand over their mouth to keep them quiet until they get out the door. Uh, and you know, they can make any kind of show they want to and act like their parent taking the kid out because it's misbehaving. And once they're out the door.
That car's weight.
It's anybody's game. Uh, but, uh, I had a conversation, uh, my wife and I did yesterday about, uh, and I told her, I said, I've, uh, I've said it for years, when you come out of a store, you need to be scanning that parking lot as soon as you walk out the door to see what's around you. Uh, because it's come to the time that, uh, and it's not anything, I spent nineteen years in law enforcement, I can't get there as quick as you can, you're already there. So while you're waiting on me, you're going to have to protect yourself for a few minutes. So be vigilant and do what you can to protect yourself and your family.
Okay, uh, Barry, anything you want to add?
No, I mean, I, I teach a public safety class in high school and one of the, uh, the topics that we discuss is human trafficking. Of course, we deal with a lot of, uh, other issues like that, you know, studying the history of law enforcement, EMS and fire and, you know, judicial system and constitution and laws where they, why, why we have laws the way we do. But, um, you say, well, it never happened here. Uh, just recently, I think there was an incident where a man pulled up to a school here in McDowell County and, uh, tried to coerce the kid to get in the car with him and call their name, knew their name, knew who they were, and they were there to pick them up as a ride and that wasn't a family member at all. Um, you, you know, you wonder, you, you worry about the security and safety of your kids. Um, I mean, even at the high school level. Um, I, I drive a bus too, you know, try to help them out a little bit. And, uh, I dropped a student off one day and before I could even get back or finish my route, the principal from middle school was calling wanting to know if I dropped that, that kid at middle school or off. I said, yes, I did. And thirty, forty-five minutes after the fact, she still hadn't shown up for home. So what went through my mind? Am I responsible for this child? Absolutely. You say, well, if the kid got off the bus, it's not your responsibility. Still my responsibility as a bus driver and as a teacher in a public school system. And, um, um, I mean, it was, you know, it was a little, I won't say a little hairy, but it was a little, I was a little on edge. Cause when grandpa called and says she hasn't shown up at home and I knew for a fact that I did drop her off because for some odd, I won't say for some odd reason, as I turned around and came back up the road, I looked to see where she's at, she's standing up in the driveway. But it got into an hour, hour and forty-five minutes and they still couldn't find her. So, um, you know, you, uh, I worry about that. Even though it wasn't my child, I'm still responsible. Be responsible for your child just as much as I am mine. And, um, I promise you this much, if I see somebody abducted in one of yours, they'll, they'll come through this adult, okay? Uh, I will protect your kids as, as far as I can, uh, even at high school age. You gotta worry about that. And, um, if for ones of you who's not been around the schoolhouse in a while, it's, it's very, that's the reason the security measures are the way they are. Uh, I remember going in to getting my children from school, we could go in and speak to the parents. Now you can't get inside the doors unless you have business there. And, um, it's, it's a hundred percent safety and I try to explain that, especially at high schools, they'll jump in the back of a trunk of a car and ride off campus. If there's a motor vehicle crash, it goes on. We witnessed it one day, we're sitting, we're eating lunch one day with a group and this kid crawls out of the trunk of the car and we're sitting there just looking at him. And, uh, he was escaping from the high school. And, uh, he saw that we saw him. And of course, the next morning he had to talk with the principal, which is okay, you know, so it can happen. Don't say it won't, it's just a matter of time, so.
Okay, what's the, uh, what is the, uh, board's pleasure regarding the, uh, human trafficking awareness proclamation? As far as adopting it?
Move that we adopt it.
Okay, motion?
Second.
Second. Discussion, all in favor say aye. Aye and opposed last time. And that will be, um, end of the record, uh, the, uh, the proclamation. Okay, uh, we are down to the last item on our agenda for tonight and that is item, oh, wait a minute, one, one other item, I, I checked it out, sorry. Uh, the food hub resolution of support. Mr. Woodton, go ahead, sir.
Yes, this is a, uh, resolution of support, uh, for the Foothills Food Hub. That was discussed earlier with the equipment. Uh, and this, uh, I think shows the, the board's support of that endeavor and, um, at a minimum should help as they continue to seek support in the community.
Okay, what's the pleasure of the board?
Motion to approve resolution. Foothills Food Hub.
Okay, have a second.
Second.
Okay, Commissioner Vaughn, uh, discussion?
I'd like to say that, uh, as we do this resolution, uh, I'd like to request that, uh, our county manager, uh, request information from the local food hub, uh, on their finances so that we can move forward in the next budget year and determine exactly how we can help them further. They can get that information to us so we can make a good decision.
Okay, other discussion? There being none, all in favor say aye. Aye and opposed last time. Okay, uh, next item is our citizen comment and, uh, we've got, um, we've got a, um, I'll just say this, um, I received several calls, uh, concerning the proposed, uh, noise ordinance that we were discussing tonight. several calls concerning the proposed noise ordinance that we were discussing tonight, which we're not discussing noise ordinance tonight, we went through a whole agenda, and I don't know where that started at, we don't have, that's not on our list of items to discuss, so, but we have received emails from the following individuals in support of no changes to the noise ordinance, and each commissioner's been copied on those, and we've got them printed, so if you're in attendance for that, we do have that for the record, and we'll review those. Now, is there anybody here who wishes to speak during citizen comment? Just come up, sign, put your name down, your topic, and you get three minutes, and we hear you gladly. All right, okay, we have conducted all the business tonight, commissioners on our agenda, they're here, motion adjourned.
Oh, one second, I've got one thing I want to mention. I had the distinct honor of being in Charlotte where President Trump was speaking this past Friday, and Danny Hampton, who is with Freedom Life Ministries, presented McDowell County very well, spoke about what Freedom Life Ministries is doing for some of the folks in our county, and I just want to say publicly that I appreciate the way that he represented our county and what he's doing for us.
Thank you, Commissioner Graham, for that. Thanks so much.
Move we adjourn.
Okay, motion, second, discussion, all in favor say aye. Motion adjourned.